Stand for the pledge, will you? Pledge, will you?
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did everyone get a chance to read last month's minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Can I get a motion to approve minutes?
Motion we approve minutes?
Second?
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, the new attorney's engagement letter, do you have, or is that the one that she emailed us?
Yeah, I printed it off. You guys just need to make a motion to accept it and double it.
Did you guys both get a chance to read that?
Yeah.
Can I get a motion to accept that, or?
I'll make the motion to accept the engagement letter from the new attorney.
Second?
I will second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Daily duties.
Who's that? No, it is as far as just to make sure that we get to print it, get the guys just to make sure that they're aware of everything that they're supposed to do. Nothing in particular is just, see if we can't get them printed off tomorrow, if you're able to, put them in their time slots or pick them up on that side of it.
No, I gotta print them copies of the new personnel policy after you guys sign that too.
Yep. Okay.
You know, I actually have to vote on the personnel policy 'cause you already voted on the changes, which is what I emailed you. I changed it exactly as what we discussed.
Yeah, I read it.
So it just needs signed, so.
The only thing I didn't see in there, but they're still listed as a five-day work week, correct? Okay, 'cause I know we talked about it, Cecil had brought it up to where not trying to do four tens, go into forty, as far as that goes.
I think it says five-day work week.
I may have missed it, but.
Uh, the work week is Thursday, 4:00 PM through Thursday, 3:59 PM is what the work week does, 'cause that's the pay period, it's Thursday to Thursday.
So we don't have to vote on it?
No. We already did, correct?
Yeah, it just needs signed.
Uh, let's see, where do we want to start? We'll start with this one, on the water department, uh, monthly testing was done, backwash twenty-five thousand gallons this month. Uh, trenching cable line for SCADA alarm system, and had a phone jack installed, meter fix on US-27. Uh, Scott Dudenlap stopped in and talked about retraining, uh, four 811 locates. Uh, he went to the 811 pipeline training, I guess they would've called it, on the beginning of February. Three final readings, ordered chemicals for water plant and lagoons, uh, delivery's March 18th. Well test done, waiting on the results. Uh, lead survey paperwork done, will go over with Doug when he gets back from vacation. Uh, bought the boat and picked it up for the lagoons. Filter test results came back good, age of filter is only concern, Phil says will need to be replaced in twenty-five or twenty-six. Due to the age, filters will be almost twenty-five by then, and most are scheduled for ten to twelve years, depending on how they're kept. Rob's working on getting parts for the alarm, will set up the alarm as soon as they're in. Um, setting up wastewater exam for the 25th. Uh, their, Phil is working on a valve quote, valves at plant are starting to have issues with closing all the way. Looking to have them replaced since they're the same valves that were put in when the plant was made, was built. And that was what?
That's been a while, and like I said, I remember.
Do you remember what, I don't even remember what year that was.
It's been a while, Chase was talking about that.
Yeah.
Five plus years ago.
Uh.
Something on the back.
No, I don't, I don't have anything on the back of mine.
Oh, quote one, quote one back?
That's what I thought.
Well, maybe it's just.
Maybe it's one of these.
Uh, yeah, it is, as far as the six-inch flanks, four-inch, as far as that goes, so, but that's.
That's utility supply. Phil's not utility supply, is he?
Mm-mm.
That's Scott, right?
It's for food supply.
Eric is the one that they get the parts from. Scott is the major supplier there.
Food's Phil.
Or, is that Ortman? Is he with Ortman?
Yeah, I think that's the.
Pretty sure.
Yeah.
Phil's with Ortman.
Um, so the material is in for the filter.
Yeah, this is just going over as far as.
What he's gonna, what he's gonna need to do.
What he's looking at as far as on that side of it.
I know he said there was one, two that needed signed, so he didn't give me a copy of those, 'cause you usually sign your copy and give it to me.
The Ortman one, uh, labor and materials, I guess that's for the valves, yeah, for six, six-inch valves and two four-inch valves and then two four-by-two flange reducers and gaskets. Um, total on that's fifteen thousand two hundred. Parts only are five thousand four hundred and twenty. And they'll have to shut the plant down to do that, won't they?
No, I think they bypass it somehow, don't they?
Mm-hmm.
I think they can do bypasses as far as to where due part of it, and then bypass it and then the other parts of them, to where there will be no also water.
If I'm not mistaken, that's something along the lines of what Sean tried to do by himself, and that's why we had the major fiasco.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the, the certified operators told, told him that they shouldn't try to, never try to do that by themselves.
Gotcha. So that was, that's the quote to do that through Ortman, that's the only one we got on that, isn't it, huh?
No, but is it the one to where he's going on valves for the plant from Phil?
Phil is Ortman.
Oh, okay. No, oh, is he?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, his name's the bottom of the Ortman thing.
Yeah, there it is.
His name's right there.
I haven't gone down that far.
So do we, can we get a, can I get a motion, I guess, to get this stuff going before we end up with major problems?
Yeah, we don't need major problems.
I know he was talking about something about the well one, about possibly having it.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think it's just the age of it, I'm guessing.
Yeah, he played.
I wasn't there for the whole conversation, so I'm not really sure.
Yeah, when I, when I was talk, when I asked him about it, um, he mentioned something about all the wells are good and it, well, one is working well, but with the age of it, that it could either need to be blown out or refurbished.
Was that from the last meeting, 'cause you tend to leave your papers laying there?
Well, it's from February 12th, but I don't understand that.
Oh.
This wasn't here with.
Yeah, it's got like a picture.
Oh, that's for the, the well.
The filters.
I mean, yeah, well, he's just.
Yeah.
That they're gonna need it between twenty-five and twenty-six.
I mean, do we, I mean, everything's going up, so.
I mean, everything is going up in price, so, I mean, it's all right, we'll get it taken care of now, I think we need to definitely take care of it now, but just to bring you up that one of the wells is gonna have to be serviced coming up.
So the quote that you have with the price, that's the filters and stuff that we need to have done, this is.
This is just, no, this is just the, the valves.
The valves, yeah, this is what's going to come, the wells.
That's on the wells?
Yeah, so that's not something that has to be voted on, that's the amount, right? That's what's gonna need to be done between twenty-five and twenty-six, the one with the pictures. 'Cause it doesn't have any place to sign or, or any prices, that's just.
I think that's the one that looks, yeah, that's gonna be the filters, yeah.
That's the filters as far as that, that.
Yeah, that's probably the twenty-five.
Between twenty and they're saying twenty, they're still fine, I mean, they're doing fine, but between twenty-five and twenty-six, that they're gonna need to be.
So the one you have in your hand, that you need to sign and the other one?
Correct.
You wanna motion on that?
Please.
I need to, I'll make a motion for Ortman to labor and material for fifteen thousand two hundred dollars to get all the valves replaced in the plant.
Second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bye.
Uh.
Utility supply.
Yeah, what's on this?
Did you sign it already?
No.
Okay.
Uh, this is more prices, I think that just, the, I think these are just the prices on the, the valves. Yeah, 'cause he said the valves. Labor only on it's fifty-four hundred and twenty dollars.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then all the valves did, are eight thousand ninety-five twenty through utility supply.
This is a breakdown of.
Right.
No.
That.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Okay, yeah, and you don't have to sign the utility supply ones, just the Ortman.
Okay. I think that was it for the water department. Uh, the street and sewer department is together here, uh, discharged Monday, the fifth through Monday, the 12th. Total gallons discharged for January were three point nine three seven million gallons. Um, Wes actually went and bought a bag of cold mix for out, right out front of the apron out here, and they replaced their, replaced his with one of ours. And then they also put an additional bag out here. Uh, purchased everything for the Green Street drain repair, uh, date to be determined. Uh, noted all signs that need repaired or changed out, plan of action for springtime. Park swept with street sweeper, dump truck load of sticks removed. Uh, sewer and street filled out wastewater application for upcoming certification tests. Uh, full skid of cold patch purchased, patched the rest of the one hundred, 103 building. Uh, picks attached to work order, repaired Ross Street manhole, lip around manhole always caught the plow. Uh, took mowers to park, mulched up the little sticks that were out. Installed no parking signs to eliminate people parking by the park lift station, pictures attached to the work order. Fixed some broken support brackets at park shelter. Uh, added steps and created walkway for both contact tanks at the lagoon. Uh, went back and installed handrails or guardrails. Uh, damaged septic line that hangs pet lodge, Pat Parker brought, I crew out, assisted with anything they needed, replaced blown rubber fern coat with repair sleeve, issues resolved, and will let dirt settle, plan to use leaf piles to cover it. Uh, they met with Cody Woodruff yesterday about getting a quote to roll the park that we've talked about for several years. And he quoted them four hundred dollars to, to bring out his machine to roll the park, the mall, all mole holes or mole mounds or whatever you wanna call them. Um. Utilized downtime to study for upcoming tests. They all three took out the old desk in the, in the office back there and built new desk for, for the water and sewer department. Uh, plan of action to rebuild the leaf box for next fall. And quotes put together for new truck, new truck. And then third truck, it's got the quotes here, baby coming in one to two weeks. You're not allowed, you still got work.
I know that.
Uh, possible paternity, paid paternity leave, uh, dump, dump truck needs serviced, uh, needs to be gone through. You guys said the clutch was pretty bad on it too, didn't you?
It's, yeah, it's, yeah, I just think it needs looked at, but.
Uh, the east side of the shop to be insulated and heated for dump truck, skids here mowers. And then the, the quote from Cody to do the park. That's, is there that, anywhere close to that in the park?
I mean, I don't know, utility bills get paid out of the park, so.
Yeah.
If you spend that much money, you're not gonna have money for malts and.
That's they take them over, run over it.
Or being, Kyle said he's got a smaller one, doesn't he?
Yeah, I don't know if it's big enough to really do much, but.
Will work if you still have molds, won't they just make more hills?
Yeah, I'd say as far as.
I think it'll be a yearly thing, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just happened to look over there the other day when I drove past and couldn't believe all the humps.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty significant, but if it's not done on a regular basis, it's defeating the purpose of doing it to begin with, so. On that, with the amount of money that's been going out, 'cause the count, every count is going na, or not negative, I'm not saying that, but everything's going backwards right now, so we need to cut out any.
I mean, just slow down spending as much as we can.
No, we need.
If you look at your guys' fund reports each month, especially with the rates being raised not that long ago, they should be going up at least a little. And when I do the bank recs every month, I notice my ending balance keeps getting smaller.
Yeah, so.
Even in the water and sewer, I know it's not budget money, but we still gotta watch on how far it goes down, 'cause state's gonna say you need to do another rate study and rates are gonna go up again.
And it's just, you know, and if we can cut out the spending right now and see where it's at, so making multiple trips into Richmond to pick stuff up just needs to stop right now, just so we can see exactly where everything's at, 'cause we were aware of hiring the third person, that that was going to tax it anyways, especially with having the other operators that are overseeing them. We just need to keep an eye on it.
Well, if, if the three of them get their sewer, they all, I don't, I said, their contract is for both.
That's something you have to discuss with Bucky and Doug about if they could, uh, lower their monthly thing if one of the guys get their, actually get certified, then we wouldn't need to sign off on the sewer stuff.
Which he has talked to them about once they do, about possibly making that change, and then because there is, um, in their contract as far as an hourly, as far as if they have questions, any other training that they may be.
It goes over what their contract covers.
You know, that we could wind up rewriting it for sewer, rewriting it for water, and then if they have any questions over the sewer department, then there would just be a a fee as far as on that side of it, but we definitely need to watch the spending, you know, pretty much, they need to cut it out on that side of it.
That's not like absolutely necessary or something that's gonna cause more problems in the near future, then it doesn't need to be done. I know nobody likes to hear that, but.
It is what it is.
Everybody's water bill, don't, everybody don't want the water bills to go up either.
I'm gonna leave these, and you guys can look at these for the truck, the third.
It's something that we need to do, you know, on that, that side of it.
I mean, it might have to wait for a little bit, I don't even, did you have?
And the past on vehicles, we've been able to usually get, use edit, there's still ARPA money, so.
Right. Did you find out, speaking of ARPA money, did you find out how much was there?
I looked, but I can't remember what it was that I, I'm, I think twenty thousand something, maybe, I don't know.
Okay, on the, on the street department, we, uh, had a meeting Thursday?
Thursday.
Last Thursday evening, uh, we opened bids for the street paving project that we got a grant for, and it was about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars over what we got the grant for, so we had to return, what'd she, what'd he call it?
Resend.
Resend, yeah, rescind the, the grant, and then we're going to reapply in July, which hopefully our NPH will build up some more money and we'll be able to do better with our, our match.
On that.
On that, so.
But as a, but we can reapply in.
July.
July on that, so it could still happen yet this year, right, just we need to.
There, I talked to Lou Monday, Friday. Him and Jonathan are planning on coming out the first of April, and we're gonna, he wants to meet with us and and figure, go through and see what all we wanna do still, so that's, that's coming in April.
Is that something those three guys can be a part of too?
Probably.
So that'll be during the day.
Yeah, it'll be during the day, so, yeah.
So, hey, and if, if we could, you know, keep these separate, sewer is one, the one thing, and street is another thing.
Uh, moving on to the town marshal, uh, four cases drawn, one active, seven for the year. Uh, training, attended DT training, uh, both dogs are certified now. AD, CPR, first aid, three-hour refresher, SFST four-hour. Not real sure what those two, that is.
Standard filth variety test.
Okay, that too. Nothing scheduled for March. Uh, the Explorer was taken to Speedy Pete and repaired. The, the siren's still not working on it, he, he's gonna take it out to Scott Blom. Uh, there's a recall on the Explorer for the molding around the front window. Um, he took the Kerry's truck back to the guys and they changed the oil in it, saving him about forty dollars. Uh, he went to drug-free Wayne County meeting, uh, an eclipse meeting, the radio meeting, and the town needs to be prepared for the eclipse in April.
We bypass that, huh?
Yeah, is it over? Do you have anything else? Sure? I don't have anything, I mean, we have, one quick thing, this is kinda from the fire department, but it's, I would like to see us have some of these fire extinguishers around, it's, it's called Cold Fire. There's a guy out on, an almost gentleman out on Morgan Creek that sells this stuff, it's an additive to water, basically. And it make, the guy that done the demo to us the other night said it makes water wetter.
Uh-huh.
Water's not wet.
Yeah. That was his exact words, and, and I was a little, Wes and myself were a little, a little skeptical about the whole, the whole deal, and then we went out there, they had a car that he set on fire, and I mean, fire was coming out of all four windows, and he took a two-and-a-half pound, or two-and-a-half gallon fire extinguisher and put that fire completely out with it in about thirty seconds, I sent Mike a video from it, and I think, I know the fire department's gonna buy some, but I think that it would be worth us to buy a couple of these, at least for the shop, and then.
Or either that, having them in their.
Vehicles.
Right.
In their vehicles.
They're small ones.
Right.
There's a one-liter one, like, like a normal DOT size that puts it behind the seat.
Yeah.
And I think that we should get them for the trucks, and maybe even the lawn mowers. And, I mean, and even the police cars. Those, the two-and-a-half gallon one is two hundred and forty-four dollars and forty-seven cents. The, the aerosol cans like this one, which is the same exact stuff, but it's in an aerosol can, is twenty-two dollars a can. But there, there's not much there, I mean, that's about a thirty-second, two-minute full going on it. The one liter, the small, the small, small one. Um. Is one fifty-six thirty for the, the small extinguisher. The, the canister itself is empty, is a hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents. The fire department is going in with Williamsburg, Webster, economy, Lynn, I think, and we're buying a couple fifty-five gallon drums of this stuff. So, that's gonna be around, and I, and like I said, Wes and I were very skeptical on it, but that guy made us, made us believe in it the other night. He took a, a penny in a rag and took a torch, like a blue can torch, melted the penny, sprayed that out of that can on that penny, and he was able to pick it up and pull it in. But it, it, I mean, it's, it's quick. He, uh, sprayed that down his arm and took his torch and went up and down his arm with it, and it didn't burn him, so. I think it's well worth it, I think we need to at least look into them for, for all the vehicles.
Yeah.
In my opinion.
Paul's phone.
And, and we're gonna get some, and Wes said that we could do a demonstration if, if we wanna wait for a little bit, and we get some, and we'll do a demo out here, that way everybody can see what it does.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that entirely up to us. It was just something I wanted to bring up, we got, we talked about it quite a bit last night, so. Okay.
As far as on the departments.
Mm-hmm.
The uniforms, they're all good to go now, everybody's gonna start wearing them.
Mm-hmm. Good. Okay, visitors, anyone? This from you? Uh, can see, oh, no.
No, it's open, I didn't know.
Trina opened it.
I didn't know what it was, I just thought it was a bell.
Um, request for consideration from Mrs. McDonald over here. Uh, still no resolution for the problem of the trucks and trailer, trucks with trailers on Water Cherry Street. Um. It's time to repair the bank opposite way of the town put in the new water meter at the top of 103 Water Street. We've got our topsoil, grassy straw. Uh, the cones being around the new water meter, and that's on, is that on yours or the one across the street?
Across the street, yeah.
It's on, it's on my banks again.
Okay.
When they were working, putting that in, they, their equipment had to go on my bank again, so there's a big gobbles there. And someplace in that mess is my, uh, drain for my, uh, gutters, and I can't find it, and I need that, I need to know where that is.
Okay.
It's not where Charles had it, they put it someplace else, and I think it's probably been run over because they've gone up on the bank. And of course, they kept going up on the bank and, and, uh, broke my drain there next to the sidewalk, so it's just kinda made a mess all along there.
Okay.
But I do need to find out where that drain is.
You guys get on that.
Mm-hmm. They'll bump in the drain when they put in the water stuff, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So there you go, these gentlemen will be out there tomorrow.
And depending on the rain, as far as that goes.
Yeah. See what you guys can get done.
They told me when they messed that up that they'd do it in the spring, well, it's nearly here, and I just wanted to get it on the agenda.
Yeah. They will.
We stopped by there today, we're just getting the plan put together.
Okay, okay. I'd do it myself, but I can't do much of anything yet, or that.
We'll take care of it.
That makes me feel bad, but.
They tore it up, these boys tore it up, they need to fix it, right?
I know, they couldn't help it, but.
Are you gonna, you gonna be home tomorrow?
Uh, tomorrow morning, and then I won't be back until late afternoon.
Okay.
But I'll be there tomorrow morning.
Who's next?
Did I hear you say we had two dogs?
Yeah.
You said both? We had two canines.
Mm-hmm.
Why two?
They were, they didn't cost us a dime, they aren't costing us a dime.
That's fine, as long as they don't cost us a dime. Well. What else did I hear? Uh, anyhow, you gonna do anything about your employee calling people bitches on social media?
We were instructed by our attorney to look, we're not answering, to answer any questions.
Not to answer any questions.
Is that not what she told us?
Did you see your employee?
Is that not what she told us the other night?
That is what she had said.
Hey, who is her new attorney gonna be?
Her name is Mara.
Don't ask me, I can't remember.
So are those questions just from me or from anybody?
From anybody is what she had said, so any, any concerns that you may have on that side of it, we are to take them as far as on that side of it, and to pass them along to the attorney on that side of it.
So, we elect you guys, and then when we have a question, we come in here and ask the question, and you guys say nothing. Right? Is that how this works now?
Yeah, I don't know.
Because you guys have to boil her up?
I don't know exactly that that's the way it is, but as far as if there's anything that's com, what would the word be?
Anything to answer the truth about?
But as far as like, social media goes, do we have anything? But as far as like social media goes, do we have anything policy wise on social media?
Okay, well, I'll put it this way, he's not to set foot on my property without forty-eight hours notice and carry with him.
Which one are you?
I'll just go with all of them, let's just go with all of them, that would. Every one of them, forty-eight hours notice and Kerry's gonna be with him. I don't take kindly to be calling a bitch. Oh, my other thing was, what's the deal with our board member there? I've been to more meetings than he has.
He's been sick.
He's been sick.
For like four months?
Yeah, he's, he, he's been in pretty bad, bad health, he's actually over.
We, we really can't discuss his health issues, so.
Well, I'm just saying, I mean.
We don't, he don't have to be here.
Right.
So he can go twelve months and not be here and still be pretty cool?
Way that the policy and I'll, I'll explain it to you as far as.
Statute, you have to be at one meeting.
One meeting.
Nope.
Pretty sure it's not one in a year?
Because we had that discussion with, uh, the other one.
Yvonne.
Yvonne and Garry's daughter, she, she does not have to be there at all.
No.
Once it's like an official.
I thought it was one meeting.
Close hours.
You don't have to be here to any meetings, you don't have to answer any questions.
Wow.
No, I think the, the answering questions, it just depends on whether or not it, it requires legal advice on that side of it.
Okay, well, I'll ask it, then you guys can answer it next month. Talk to your attorney, I would like to have, I would like to have an answer today.
We'll make sure she's here next month.
I, I mean, I thought, I figured if we pay her, she ought to be here every month, but.
Right, like she just got hired, but as far as on, we accepted her contract.
It was just official tonight, so that's why she wasn't.
My other attorney wasn't here at the last few meetings either.
We didn't have one.
No, only before that.
Right.
Anyone else? I just have a question, who's the slot? Caretaker of the basketball courts, city or the fire department?
The street.
This is the city.
Oh. In that case, could I ask why we put gravel around the outside instead of blacktop or more concrete?
That, what is, one of them was built in two thousand eleven.
Oh.
When that was done. And I, I think it was part of the grant over the, when we built onto the back of the station.
Cause all these.
Yeah.
Hard days to be polite. Keep throwing rocks and stuff out there and it's hard to play ball, I don't play, of course, but.
There was, at one point there was a, a gentleman that would sweep it off every time he come up to play, so. I mean, that's just one of them.
Yeah, I just wonder.
And at this point, there's no way that we could get an asphalt all the way around there just because of the.
Catching my discussions, I had no authority.
Did they break the window?
Or basketball goal?
Um, on that note. The fire department has replaced three now.
Two, the one of.
Two, at least two, if not three. And per the chief and per the township trustee, we will not buy another one. But if these get broke, we're, the fire department's not going to pay to buy them anymore.
Why are our cameras so pregnant that we can't watch that?
Not like we can, I mean, we can, but we don't know when, exactly when things happen.
And the ball players seem to think they're supposed to throw a football at the goals.
Yeah.
And so you guys can see the ball, or the wall courts on your cameras?
Can we see the ball courts?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay.
Can't always necessarily make.
They have been broke for a while.
Yeah, it, it was last summer, I think, was the last one that was broke.
I think. If I remember right, the last time Jeff, I, the town helped pay for one backboard, one set of backboards, I can't remember when it was, cause me and Jeff looked at them and.
Right.
But definitely if anything else gets broke, then the cameras will be looked at to see if we can identify who it is that's doing it.
That's the reason we have cameras.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
If we have to replace them again, we could just put a piece of plywood and show them how it was in the old days.
Mm-hmm. They were like that when we actually put them up, when the court got moved.
Yeah.
I remember that.
Yeah.
I tried to keep one of those backboards, so everyone throw it out, I, I couldn't carry it by myself.
Yeah.
It was layered, it was heavy.
Anyone else? Uh, okay, moving on, can I get a approval for claims and payments?
I'll make the motion to, uh, approve claims and payments.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
A motion we adjourn.
No, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Everyone have a good evening?